I think we're all here.
Okay, it's back on.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, well then I'll just stand up. Hi, Kim, can I think, oh, I've got a camera, you can see me. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So, um, yeah, my name's Tara Orban and I am a consulting librarian at the State Library. Uh, I might have met you if you've been to Pathfinder Federation meeting or, or, um, maybe at the Fall Workshop in Great Falls. And my boss is Tracy Cook, who I think you all know, and then my colleague Cory Sloan. She is out on maternity leave right now for just a little bit longer, so that's happy to be here. And I'm excited to talk about planning because I like planning. I, I would like it if you just go around and introduce yourself and, and, um, anything that you'd like to, to share.
You know, Nona Dan was there.
Yeah.
I live, well, Justin was first. I'm beyond her, in the Prairie. I'm kind of similar to her, with just some cats. I was a PM teacher. And I still, I still, I still am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And bookkeeper for three generations.
I needed to go home. It's that time you get a monthly call and say, well, I need a WNI or something, so, okay. Yeah.
I'm Jesslyn Rittland. Um, I am a mother of four. And I stay home with them now. Three are in school and one is at home and I help my husband on the family farm. Um, but I am trained as a physical therapist.
Um, and I am Emily Wicks. I grew up in Forbin and left for a while and came back and I'm the director.
Kim? She doesn't have a microphone.
Well, I think she does. She said.
I know. I heard you're under the weather, so we'll give you a pass, Kim, unless you'd like to introduce yourself.
Sounds good. I'm trying to use my microphone, but it might not work too well with these, uh, earbuds.
Sorry, you're not feeling well. Hope you are feeling better soon. Okay, well, thank you for introducing yourselves and, um, so we're gonna use this time to talk about, um, planning, who's involved and what, what our roles and responsibilities are in creating and then carrying out the plan. What is generally in a plan, um, you know, the useful plan is the plan that you use. So we'll try to arrive at a, a place where you can write, uh, or you can have a, a useful plan ready to go. And then, um, what I would like, and I know we're kind of a small group, I think it would be really helpful because you are a county system and you have a, a special challenge of trying to meet all the needs throughout the county, right? So I, I'd like to have, um, you break into like groups of two, if that's possible, and talk about, you know, there are different communities and how people use the library, what's going on in your community, all those, those questions that I have on this outline. We could spend some time, um, talking about those, those things that should be informing your plan so that you have a plan that really serves your community and, and your library. And then we're going to try to identify, okay, so all these unique things about our communities, what, what do we have in common as a system that, and what could be the priority for a few goals for the next few years? And if we have time, I always think we have more time than we do, but if we have time, then, then we can try to walk through, how would we write one of those goals? And that's probably all we'll have time for, um, and then I'll have all those notes which I can hand over to Emily and then you all can continue the work of fleshing out those goals. So that's the plan. And we'll see how it goes. Um, so I meant to ask you about your experiences with, with planning. How do you feel about planning?
I don't plan. I fly by the seat of my pants, so.
Plan?
Yeah.
Do you plan? I plan when I go to the stores and go pause and I try to plan which ones are which directions.
Yeah.
That is true.
Yeah.
That's.
You do the thinking in grocery store.
Right through this, but.
So I guess we plan, don't we?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. And I plan because, uh, partner statement seating and all that, I have to plan. Different meal set for tons of time for different amounts of people. Twelve or more.
Yeah, day-to-day planning, yes, but this planning is over my head. I feel like there's so much more to look into that. Appreciate the help and guidance in that way.
Yeah.
I don't have to make big strategic plans either. It's day-to-day. What you have to do, prepare for two hours.
Well, it's, yeah, and there's kind of the, the element of your day-to-day planning that we're, we're, we're gonna carry into this plan because, you know, like Janet said, like you, you are kind of, every day you're thinking, okay, I need to be at this store at this time, so in order to get to the store in this time, we need to leave, you know, at this time, and I need to remember my wallet and my keys and blah, blah, blah. So it's kind of the same idea, like, here's where we want to go and here's how we're gonna get there. So that's what we're going to try to.
So Kim texted, um, her input. We have done planning in the past, but never used it past the class slash training during which we formed it.
Sometimes that happens too. And so the goal is to like make a, a plan that is, is relevant and useful in, in that you can actually take it and do something with it, so that's.
Um, so my history with planning is, um, as a music teacher, um, at different levels is, you have the day-to-day lesson planning, then you have your little bit longer, the next concert or, standards that you need to meet as a teacher. And then with music especially, if you have a classroom teacher, if you have a first grade teacher, you're doing the same, not the same exact thing every year, but you have your set, um, versus music when I was doing grades five through nine, you have to plan what that five-year arc looks like. And if you want your kids by the ninth grade to be able to do this, then what do you have to do in the fifth grade, the sixth grade, the seventh grade, the eighth grade, the ninth grade? So, um, a lot of the planning that I've done throughout my career is along this line of setting your goals that you want. What do I want kids to learn as they go into a high school program? Then what do I need to do each year to make sure that happens? And some of that involved, some projects where every other year, um, different fundamentals that we covered somewhere every year. Seventh graders did this versus eighth and ninth graders did that, so. Um, and then that also includes that community piece where what do parents want to listen to or what does the community want to, to hear or to see or to that, that what we're facing expectation. So that's my history with this type of planning.
And so the, the sort of analog I think of in that, um, example, Emily, is, you know, you have that five-year, like, by, by the end of five years, the student will be able to do this. And so between now and then, they need to do these things. And that's sort of like, like there's a strategic plan where you, where the board approves a strategic plan which has those goals, which are hopefully tied to what your community and your libraries need. And then you have the, the work of carrying out those goals and that's often, you know, in like a work plan that the direct, the director will create. And so we are talking about our roles and responsibilities, who's involved in writing the plan. We have the board and you are, you are listening to your community, you're listening to your director and staff and understanding like, okay, this is what the library can do for our community. And so we think these big major goals should be our focus for the next few years. And then once you have approved a plan, then the director will think about, okay, well, how do we carry out those goals? And in this year and the next year and what kind of resources do we need? And that's, that's where it becomes that kind of conversation, as you know, when we need this in the budget or we need this much staff time or we need this partnership to carry out those goals.
So Kim, that's a good question.
Yes.
So some communities, like we have different communities, can you, do you have to plan for all the communities in one? Or can you have separate community plans?
Yeah, that's, that's.
So it's kind of like you live in Helena, but you would plan for the library that's in Butte or Antocana or Whitehall or, you know, because we're, this library is forty miles from the other library.
Yeah, and, and I, I live in Lewis and Clark County, so Helena, Augusta, Lincoln, East Helena, they're all, and they are all different communities. Um, I think that there is certainly their day-to-day work is gonna look pretty different. And I think the plan is intended to help identify, okay, what, what does our county system? How can we effectively use this county system to serve everybody? And knowing that each community is gonna have unique needs, but what are some goals that would serve everybody? Because, um, but the strategic plan isn't intended to, to outline, like, here's your day-to-day work. It's supposed to be addressing, here's some things that we know are maybe some problems we want to solve.
Okay.
And it's, it, it's not everything, but it could be things that you know are, uh, something that everybody might, might benefit from in the county.
Karen, can I ask one more question? So if the board is, is helping to identify those bigger goals, is that, am I understanding it then that the director or staff community would help us break those down into more specific goals? Is that what you were saying?
Um, yeah, I think it would be great to have input from, yeah, the library.
Right.
Okay, the director and the director working with staff is going to bring their inputs.
Sure.
So you have a unique position, of course, as a trustee. You're getting input from the community and you're getting input from your director and you're balancing the needs of, well, just what the community needs from the library and here's what the library needs you to communicate to the community or to advocate for the library, to your local government, stuff. Um, yes, all of those.
Yeah, okay.
And then you have support groups, right? You have, you said you have a foundation.
Yes.
And you have a friends group?
So Forbin has a friends group and Big Sandy has a friends group.
And so that, that would be, uh, maybe some groups that you would also ask for their inputs when you're thinking about your community input. Uh, so elements of your plan. I don't, I don't think I have seen a copy of your past, I, that was, I should have asked for that, but, um, it's, it's usually a three to five-year plan. And I think really a three-year plan is probably good because, you know, a lot can change in five years and even at the State Library, we have a five-year plan, but then we realize, oh, this thing we thought was really important two years ago is not as important now, so let's change that plan. So, um.
Yeah, Maren went through and found, um, a plan from spring of two thousand. One from ninety-nine and then the latest that was from.
When I graduated in high school.
We have a variety.
We're not even gonna say.
Yeah, we just found them yesterday.
No, I just eventually.
So, yeah, maybe a, you know, three to five-year plan, you have your mission statement and all your goals are usually, you know, they should be tied to your mission statement. Which the mission statement is usually pretty broad, right? Like, we're going to serve the needs of our community.
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna look at our mission statement. We need to redo that.
And then you will usually have, you know, three goals is pretty good because they're gonna be big, broad goals, right? And a lot of things can happen under a goal. So.
Right.
So if you can identify three really good goals and then that gets broken down into how are you gonna achieve your goals? And some of that gets more into the, you know, the, the, the implementation plan or the work plan that the director is gonna work out, like, here's how we want to meet these goals. And then it's really good to think about how you will know when you have achieved your goals, your success measures, how, you know, what will success look like? And sometimes that's hard to quantify.
Yeah.
But.
Put this word out, smart, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-based.
Yeah. If, yeah, if you can write smart goals, um, those are, those could be really helpful ways to evaluate your progress. So, uh, this is the part where I wanted to ask if you could talk to each other groups. I know we're, we're a small groups of two, so like. And, and talk about these questions and then I'd like us to come back and have a, a discussion so we can make some notes. So we have, and this is, I was talking to Emily about this before the meeting because I was trying to figure out, um, because we have four communities. And I know you have people outside of communities that you're serving as well, but let's focus on these four communities. And how should we, how can we break this up? So you have Big Sandy, we have Fort Benton, we have Geraldine, Highwood. And I was asking if it would make sense to have Geraldine and Highwood as one group? Do you think that would make sense? Or how could we?
I almost think Highwood and Fort Benton, Geraldine and Highwood are super separated, where I know a lot of people come to Fort Benton.
Okay.
Yeah. Versus. Right.
Okay.
I mean, I know they're not at large, but I was with Big Sandy prior to that, so I think.
Okay.
Big Sandy.
Okay, so we have, uh, and Nona, would you be Big Sandy as well?
Oh, we're.
All right, so if the two of you could talk about these questions regarding Big Sandy.
No, just for us.
Geraldine.
I can talk about Geraldine.
Okay. And Highwood? Okay. Could you two work together?
I see what I'm, I messed that up.
No, you didn't. This is, this is impossible math. And then we have Fort Benton and, um, so I, Kim, you, uh, I know this is gonna be challenging for you to be online or using text, but how, how would you, Emily, do you want to talk to Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do, let's, let's have ten minutes of. Busy and then we bring it back in.
So I can unlock the newspaper room for two people and if two people wanted to go over there, just so it's not a lot of extra noise.
Noise.
Whatever.
So about eleven thirty-five, let's, let's come back together.
Yeah. So I think I'm gonna just mute it.
I can't find any of you. Okay, so, um, yeah, I'd like to hear from each of you about your conversation, so let's start with Big Sandy and can you tell me, what you talked about regarding the library?
Amanda? Well, it's, Big Sandy likes to tell her own story. They really do. They don't have sports in any other towns, but they're all. They, um, make sure that everyone is involved in the library. So in the morning, the men come in and read the newspapers. There, right after that, all the ladies come in, they have coffee in the library and discuss, you know, things. And then in the afternoon, the mothers come and they bring small children, but they also come because they have kids in sports and they have other communities, so they, they make a wider community center. So, and, um, and about, so, um, about four o'clock or so, they do a study hour and that's when the older kids come. They help each other with their homework and then they help the younger kids that are there also. So it's kind of like a, an all, all day, um, library. It's a very, um, very active library.
It, it's a community center that serves a lot of groups. Um, any thoughts about the community in general that you'd like to, to share or? Anything else about the library?
I've been to the library more and they seem to get a lot of, um, grants and, well, they got computers from Triangle Communications that were used computers and they just donated them to them, so things like that. You know, where they have her is really good to Big Sandy and to the library and give them help with a lot of things, grants and.
That was an Ag West grant and they bought some from that money.
Yeah, and they have Janelle Barber come down and she, they make all kinds of stuff. Yeah.
A connection to have her.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, except that it's not a city. That's one thing about Fort Benton, they make the right calls before. So, you know, it makes a difference. Havers.
Oh, closer. Yeah, we have a Walmart.
And the closest they have would be, would be Billings. That's where we go north.
Yeah, the, the farming has changed, so I think Haver has gotten less shopping and less choices.
I think they have less money too, because they have a lot of native kids that they need to help care for.
In Haver?
No.
Yeah, the reservations are close.
Reservations are close.
But farming has changed.
And not in a good way. Yeah.
And there's our native populations. Anything else about Big Sandy?
Well, they have like firemen, what do they call that? Oh. They feed the firemen feed and then you give your money.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and when someone has a terrible illness or something, they're really good about giving all their, their time and their money.
Big Sandy seems like a pretty cohesive community. Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, talking between fifty and a hundred bucks, so that can work. It is just amazing. They have such.
They take care of their own.
Like I said, they tell their own story. They're just.
So I noted that, uh, there's a, the proximity to Haver is, is important to the community. Farming has changed, native population and that the community is pretty close-knit and has a lot of fundraisers and will support each other. And that seems to be reflected in how the libraries use this community, meaning the center.
Yeah, because they added a meeting room onto their libraries, so they have girls, they have first, they have everything.
That's really so.
What do you think that people are worried about in, in Big Sandy?
Oh, what are they worried about?
And if it's okay if you don't have anything in particular?
I think they are worried about farming prices right now and not meeting things and.
So kind of, uh, they say economic concerns?
Yes.
Yeah. They, they took it very personally when they had eight hundred books removed from their library. It became very personal to them.
Yes.
So they had a concern about, um, having some control over the collection development. Um, what do you think people are excited about?
They just love their town. I can't explain it. I went up there for the Christmas thing. There must have been two hundred people in the library. I mean, it was just, yeah, it's just a center. I, I think it's because they don't have anything else.
There was food.
Yes, there was.
And there was drawings.
There was drawings and fourteen baskets. They had, they had, they had all sorts of cookies and dollars and they had apple cider.
Friends helped.
Yeah.
Do stuff and friends of the library were in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then also, shoot, I lost my thought. Anyway, well, every five years we have a all-school reunion, so this is coming up in June. And that's a huge thing for the town. Because it'll be busy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Relationships.
And they're, and they're, they're proud of their school and their sports and their music program and, yeah.
And they have an amazing gym. I mean, with every exercise thing, I mean, they could be the peak.
Well, they, they got grants to do that. Yeah, they applied for a lot of.
Anything else that you would like me to note for Big Sandy?
Oh, well, a personal note, because I grew up there, got married there, had kids. For a while you're like, God, I hate Big Sandy. But then, well, you do, you go through the stage and now I'm like, wow, I really appreciate being here and helping the town. Yeah, because you, I guess you, well, I want to go somewhere else. No, I don't. I want to, I want to stay here. Yeah.
And the school decided to, to take my children on. So they never went to school in Big Sandy. They never played sports in Big Sandy. They, we don't put a church in Big Sandy. We don't. Yeah.
Because you were closer to Fort Benton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, let's talk about Fort Benton. Emily, you had the, the task of taking notes for Kim, so thank you for doing that. And you have?
Um, yeah, so we discussed, so that first question, who uses the library? And, uh, we have, we have kind of two different, approaching it from different kinds of uses. So you have, like Janet and Nona talked about, a community center use. Um, we do not necessarily have that as much here in Fort Benton because there's other, they talked about how there's really no place else to go in Big Sandy, but there are other places um, to go in Fort Benton. So for in-person use, we do have, um, older retired people who come in throughout the day, read the newspaper, um, check things out, families for storytime, um, kids that come in after school. Uh, but we have a higher um, usage of folks that come in to check out books and then leave. Um, the circulation versus patron numbers, um, that I hand out every month is, that is reflected in the different, um, those different things. So uh, people who are of work age, so if you think from twenty to sixty, uh, don't necessarily come and hang out here in the evenings or don't come during the workday, but might come in on their lunch hour, they grab a book. We have teachers that come after school to, to bring back books and check out books. And so it's a different usage.
I used to could say simulated books on fast.
Yep, and we.
Come and pick them up and.
Yeah.
Have a good unit and bring that.
So those are, that's how we approach that question, like, who uses the library versus who doesn't use it? Um, just those different kinds of use. One thing that Kim brought up is not a lot of places in Forbin are necessarily handicap accessible, as accessible. And so if you need a meeting room, we have a variety of meeting rooms that are all handicap accessible. People can come in the side door with a button, take the elevator, come downstairs. We have from this size meeting room, we have the small meeting room, if you need a private area. She says as an insurance agent, there are certain, um, guidelines that they have to meet, like she can't meet with a client. Guidelines that they have to meet, like she can't meet with a client in an open air and um. I think in in their particular building, she is able to do that. To make that work, but there are other insurance agents that, so that is something if somebody needs to come here and have a a meeting that's blocked off from other people. So that is a. A usage for that, and that was the main since we got on after you guys started talking. We didn't really get into the other questions, but.
Uh, anything that you'd like to add about the community in general?
I don't know, I know.
Thank you. How about Geraldine?
So Geraldine is kind of like Big Sandy, it's. But where it's different is it's. No, no worries at all. So it's more remote, it doesn't really have a tie to any bigger towns, so it is also more of a community center, I would say for. The individual in Geraldine, uh it's also a farming community. And I would say Sammy Jo is very well loved in her. Community, she does a really good job with projects specifically with the younger aged kiddos. She has some really good projects going on right now, the Democracy Project, um Reading Hour. Am I going too fast? I'm sorry.
No, you're you're fine. And I'll read back to you and make sure I capture. The the librarian is especially loved.
I think so.
What we hear about libraries was this, they know there's space between the people. And what I'm hearing in each of these communities is that it's 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 a place for kids to come in and enjoy.
Yep, I know Sammy Jo has a lot of um crafts that if the kids can't make it to storytime, she keeps them out for them on the table and they can come pick them up and use them and. Take them home. No, you're just fine.
In Big Sandy, they have times to their swimming. They can hardly wait to come back to the library. They go to some place and they come back to the library.
In regards to how the use of the library is changing. I don't know that there's really been a change, other than once that we they just had a really big, not a really big, but yeah, it was a big remodel and since then, I would say that. Um, use has been increased specifically for the younger ages because they made a really good space there for them.
What about the community in general?
Um, it's a farming community, small town, very close knit. They're very into their sports. They're now co-op, but I think that just made their, they're just that much more close knit even with that co-op. They're just very proud of their community, which is very neat. And I shouldn't just said farming, they're also. Ranching as well, farming ranching, yeah.
The library is a well-used community center, the librarian uh is. Very loved in the community and uh that kids love to use the library or craft programs. They've seen increased use since the remodel. The community in general is pretty close knit, it's a farming and ranching community and people are very active in sports. Supporting sports programs, yeah. Anything else, anything that um are challenges or concerns?
I'm not aware of their concerns at this point. I don't know if Sammy Jo has said anything to you, Emily, about any concerns. I mean, their big concerns I know was their remodel because of how things were, um and a lot of that has been met within recent years. They're happy.
Well, I would have been. A school community library. So the library that he is mostly by school kids. The older people who used to use their library, the teenagers, they have, the doors were locked during the day. They had to come. And when they, and you know, running well and. It entered, so that ceased, so the older, the older people still, we use that a lot of the year, pretty much. So now we don't have a building. So we don't know where to build. I don't know yet if they would like us to have a corner, and I think they wouldn't. But it's possible if you do uh. We're coming every Thursday at two o'clock or Thursday, Thursday or whatever. And if we take, generate some interest, I think we don't know what the interest is. I think we have young women that can use it, they have a library there and use it. If it was a place to go. So we also took a lot of the mobile at one time. And I would like to do a survey. Not on a computer, but written. Survey, we don't, I'm sure how to keep those on, but just this is what the community wants. We have a little corner of the senior center, but it's not occupied, there's. But you have a library before that because they have trouble with the roof, they have trouble with. It has been pretty close to the seniors. I know it was a little, I I had the center, Larson had to send her. And her, or somebody over to help work on some of the windows, because it was a room. I haven't known what the library would be anywhere. The school senior center and then the school, and I know every time he has, I think they have stations somewhere. But I know it's, because they talked about maybe putting a building board out there, so they knew when somebody was there.
So that's a real challenge for Highland. Yeah, that's definitely a a situation that is.
But I think.
In lots, right?
I think there's a section of the community that would really like to go on the road and. There's approximately great funds, which sometimes.
I will type these up so you don't have to try to decipher my left-handed handwriting. I I knew we were going to have more than we could cover in an hour, um but that's, this was all good um. Good input that you provided. I wonder if you could identify some. Commonalities that you've heard as as we're all talking. Of these communities.
They're close-knit communities in each. And they all seem to love their librarians.
After me. And probably the schools and the librarians, the libraries are. Keep it all kind of together.
I heard I heard an emphasis on on kids and youth and that everybody is doing a really great job in all of these communities. I was supporting.
Fort Benton does a really good job of that too. You guys are at the school um for reading programs quite often.
And then for, yeah, I really didn't hear a lot of challenges. I mean, obviously Highland, there's a challenge there with the building. Um, and then there are some economic concerns which are probably everywhere. But I some opportunities, you you might have some opportunities if you're looking at some of these. These things that you have in common across the system. I was, I was thinking about the question that somebody asked about um. How do you create a plan for a county? And I thought that was a good question, so I just quickly looked up Lewis and Clark's. Plan, and so an example of one of their goals, goal one, library facilities, and it just says um. Improve all branches to meet community needs, which is really, you know, broad, but that's where then you would work with. You know, the director would think about how, what does that look like in each of those branches and what do what does this community need? What, you know, I would, it's a place where people to gather and so thinking about how to break that down.
Do you say that goal again, please?
From this plan, it was um improve all branches to meet community needs.
Thank you.
Could be good.
It could make things more flexible and inaccessible and. Well. Okay, we have two minutes left, so I think we're not going to be walking through a goal. Um, what, how would you like? To proceed with with this, so I can type these notes up for you. And then what do you, what do you see as your very next step?
Getting together?
We need to form goals apparently.
Nancy mentions needing to get some input from the community and. A paper survey, and that's something that is very doable or have some places in the community where you could collect some inputs, I think. Like, that would probably be a really good idea as a next step.
That could be in each community, not just. Highwood even, so we have a better idea. Of community needs. I'm gonna mute this again a moment. Twelve oh nine.
I would like to welcome everyone here today. Thank you for attending the Chautauqua County Library Board Trustee Meeting. On January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I called the meeting to order at twelve oh nine. And before we get started on the agenda, let us strive to have a productive meeting where everyone is respected, valued, seen and heard. Please be reminded that your comments will be positive with no inappropriate behavior, no personal attacks towards anyone seated at this table. Disrupted patrons will be asked to leave. Comments will only be about the issues on the agenda. Please remember, if anyone's listening on Zoom, you will have a chance to comment and you need to, we'd like to know who is talking on Zoom. You get three minutes. We ready to go, kids? Okay, first one, call to order, public comment.
No, it's a change.
Change, okay, is is there any changes or and and I'm still new at all this, so when I make a lot of mistakes, I will. Are there changes or additions to the agenda?
No, I like to uh go back and talk during the unfinished business about doing the consensus.
A consent agenda, is that? A consent agenda?
Consensus. So I can report about it now or later.
Whatever.
Well, we're just doing them unfinished.
All right, any others? All right, is there public comment on the items on the agenda? If you guys have an agenda? Right, moving on to the minutes, we have to consider approval for the October, November, December twenty-four minutes. And I did send out packets and asked that we look them over good, so we don't have to spend a whole lot of time looking them over, so. Are there any um any questions about the minutes? So. Do we make a motion or do public comment?
Um, you call for the motion and then call for. I believe.
Okay, I would like to have someone do a motion for approval of the October, November and December twenty twenty-four. Minutes, meeting minutes.
So make that motion.
Have a second? Okay, we will vote. All in favor? Public, hmm, okay, not not voting yet, public comment.
Minutes.
Yeah. Did we, any comments on the minutes? Okay, now we will, it's been first, it's been a miss man made to approve the minutes, sorry. And we have a second, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, that one is done. Thank you. Okay, now um the, there were a lot of papers this time, the monthly financial reports. For the October, November and December, these are just financial, this budget.
Financial reports.
Okay, financial reports, this is an action item, uh we need to, is is are there any questions among the trustees?
We're still waiting on December's, correct? Do for the bills paid. Um, it's in the packet, I was, I was able to get it done yesterday afternoon, thank you. It just, I wasn't sure if I was gonna use it, there wasn't very much from December. There wasn't very much from December and the financials, I think, I don't know how she does it, but. It was mostly um all books and then um. Like a phone bill and a. Power bill, and not even for all the branches, but. So, but it isn't there.
Public comment on the financial reports. Oh geez, I gotta break this down better. Okay, I would like to have a motion to have approval. Of the, where we at, financial reports for October, November and December of two thousand twenty-four.
I know we accept the financial reports for October, November, December, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, now public comment, correct? Any public comment? Okay, we will vote, we have us first, we have is. Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor of accepting the financials, say aye? Opposed? Hey, motion period. All right, branch reports.
Well, I think that Big Sandy is on, if they would like to present theirs, showing a microphone and a camera. I'm not sure, but I can read through them also.
I did, I don't think she said what you're gonna do about that.
Oh, they were for a second, so you were unmuted for a second, you want me to wait? I'm not sure, sometimes if there are two Zooms going at once, it does that.
Okay, how about now?
Go, girl.
Okay, so in November, um, we had. Election Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, um, lung cancer awareness. Di-November and we did, um, we decorated the library with November, um, with quotes of interesting facts. Um, we did weeding in November as our projects. And, uh, in December, we had, um, Christmas stroll, um, which was a great success. Um, we had, thanks for letting us be open, we had a lot of people come for that. Um, and we had, uh, decorations were ugly Christmas sweaters. Um, and we were, we're reorganizing the shelves as our project. And that's what I have for my reports for November and December.
Um, for the Fort Benton Branch, um, for October, themes were Halloween, fall, spooky. Explorers, Hispanic Heritage Month, wolves, bats, ghosts, witches, mummies and zombies and elections. Projects included outreach with the fifth and sixth grade, um, for Benton Elementary Classes, we hosted the Pathfinder Meeting. Um, we had a presentation in collaboration with the local quilt guild, um, for presentation for the story quilt, and we had books and treats. Um, November. Native He- Native American Heritage Month, veterans baking and cooking, November. Um, Di-November, Thanksgiving, hope, foxes, owls and adoption. Um, the project I had in November was I finished that public library survey that's due every year. And after the foundation meeting in October, uh, we did the building walkthrough with, um, Justlyn, right? Justlyn and Nona and Rich, um, and started bid gathering for things, and I will talk more about that later. And then in December, Christmas and other winter holidays, Pearl Harbor, Japanese internment, Best of Twenty Twenty Four, Winter and Dance. And we had our Shoto County Country Christmas, um, make and take and book sale. The book sale was the Friday and Saturday and ma- make and take went on all month long, so that were our main events. Um, Sammy Joe was on, Sammy Joe is on, Sammy Joe? For October, the Geraldine Branch Libraries themes were fall, Halloween and new books, because we had so many great new ones. My projects for October and November are very similar, all the shelving that was purchased for the shed is set up. Everything is organized in the back room and the shed. The Geraldine Review Newspapers have come back over to Geraldine and are all squared away in the back room. And, um. For November, uh, our themes were election and voting, Native American heritage and Thanksgiving. In November, um, we did a community Christmas card exchange with Geraldine, Alabama. And Geraldine, New Zealand, two hundred and thirty-two Christmas cards were made at the library. And sent from our community to Geraldine, New Zealand as part of the Three Geraldines Christmas Card Exchange Project. And, um, our themes for December were Christmas, winter and snow. And I am just still working on that democracy project, trying to figure out what we are going to do and trying to get that done.
The Christmas card thing sounded very wonderful.
It was pretty neat, um, almost everybody that is on our telephone directory here in Geraldine received a Christmas card from Geraldine, New Zealand. So that was, that was pretty fun, we had, um, a police officer exchanged with one of our local police officers. And, um, our mailman, their mailman exchanged with our mail lady, so yes, it was, it was a fun community thing that we did.
You gonna do it again?
I don't know. Well, we'll see, I'm hoping that this, we, we, we were kind of, the three Geraldines that did this, we were like. Here's your, your jumping point after this, it's up to you to continue communication, so we'll see how it goes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Um, so then, at the, at the back of the packet of, um, after the circulation statistics of December twenty twenty-four. Is a copy of the letter that we received from the Hywood School Board in October, or well, it was received in November, I'm sorry. It should be.
Kind of right before the, it's not in the very back.
It's not the very back.
Hywood Public Schools.
So on October twenty-ninth, there was a, the high, Hywood School Board held a special meeting. And during that special meeting, they voted to end the school community co-op officially. They voted on the termination of that, so it talks about it in that letter. The Hywood School Board of Trustees hereby notifies you of their unanimous decision to terminate this agreement. Termination will become effective May fifteenth of two thousand twenty-five, they used Article Five out of that agreement. Um, I am not sure. I personally do not know. When the last time that document was in effect, that agreement, like actually what was within that agreement. And so I do understand and I respect that they wanted, I mean, if it's a legal document you want, if you don't want it, you want to make sure that you terminate it, so. Um, I have done everything on my side that I can do, so.
I think that.
It was in effect for two years from when it was originally.
And it, it just hasn't. I mean, and I think that's a good thing for us. Because. Accessibility was limited and I think we can do better.
Um, and so that was, I did. Talked to Brianna Bowman Superintendent on the phone before that meeting. To let her know that I was available for any questions or anything, um, but I've not spoken with anyone af. I have not had any contact with anyone after that meeting, so.
I have a question. On the circulation. I will just give him some books.
No, but there's books checked out.
Because it's still on the shared catalog, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's in school session, so that's why we still see them, because we can, until May.
If they don't get some books from you, or that's not what that means, like circulation thing.
No, so though, yeah, so like Justlyn said, those circulation numbers are books that are checked out at their school library.
Okay.
As far as I know. Right, it just comes as a report that I get.
We won't see that report, right, that's what.
Um, it depends on, um, the school board now has to work with the shared catalog people. Because currently they fall under the county umbrella for, because it does cost to be part of the shared catalog. And so if they want to keep being a part, it is my understanding that if they want to keep being part of the shared catalog. There are steps that they have to take on their end to do that. But I don't have anything to do with that, our elementary school and high school, and as far as I know, Big Sandy also is not part of the shared catalog. So it's not a requirement the school, school does, but, um, that is not our, under the Board of Trustees jurisdiction at this point, so.
Anything else to add? Directive report, Emily, please. If you're ready.
Um, the main. Thing that I have is, um, so we had the special board meeting in December. To approve the bid for the boiler. Then I was, um, in contact with Matt McDonald, he called the next week and we got it scheduled on January second and they came and got it. Basically, I mean, they got it all installed on the second, so it was running, and then came back on the third, they had to do. A blowout or something, and they had a couple more things to do, but. Um, we have already noticed a huge, huge difference. And it has to do, he was able to explain it in boiler talk, it has to do about ramp up and let down and circulation and all those things. But I have to say. The whole time that I've worked here, the, the line upstairs between the, the, the new part and the old part was very noticeable. And now, and it was either warm or not warm in the side of the building, and now you can go in and it's, it's quite cozy and nice. He was very happy to see that we had the fans upstairs, because that also helps with, um, the circulation. And it actually has made the whole building more efficient, because that side is not working so hard to try to balance that other side. So it's been a great, it was really great to work with him. Kim, I think, has saw him over. So, uh, well, she talked to him, yeah, she talked to him over, I think she saw him somewhere, um, and he had just finished another. Uh, project in the county, in town, so it was great, and he is available if we have any problems.
Next week's win.
Hopefully, yeah.
Be warm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's good, I'm glad. Good, so that, that's very good, I'm glad it worked out.
So, another piece is the Lippard Claywitter. Awards came out, we had, uh, the board had requested eleven thousand dollars and was awarded five thousand. So we did order the book binder. Um, that came in at one thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Um, which leaves a balance of three thousand, which is not enough for purifiers or for shelving or for anything else at this point. So, um, Kim did reach out to. Not the committee, but someone, um, to see if there was a way that they preferred, if there was something, and the response was that. To use it as the, the foundation sees fit.
The extra three.
So that will be a discussion, uh, our drinking fountain. I was working with Northwest Pipe Fitters on that, uh, I believe. My last communication with him was that they got the unit in yesterday and they will be delivering it tomorrow. And then I will be contacting, um, a plumber to get that installed, and that's going to be. The drinking fountain with the, um, built-in bottle filler, you see him at the school. I worked with Russ Axman on that to get local, because they have redone the school one, so. Um, that was another. Uh, building thing that we had talked about earlier. This is also under, um, announcement states to remember, but I did find out yesterday that. Um, we received a grant through Humanities Montana for two thousand dollars to host Hassan Davis. He's out of New York, he is a living history presenter. Um, when we did the story quilt project and I worked with the Great Falls Library on that, because, um, she presented up there. I saw that they were having him in, in February, so I. Worked with the programming woman in Great Falls, and then I was connected with Hassan, and he is going to come to Fort Benton. And I'm working with River and Plains, we are actually going to host that at the Egg Museum on February tenth. At five thirty, so he gave us a bit of a deal on that, since he was coming for. To be in Great Falls, so I'm very, I've had a lot of interest from, from River and Plains, that they're very excited to have him here. Uh, and some community excitement about that, and then we are for Fort Benton. Um, trying to get our calendar laid out with, um, programming and events, I think in April, we're going to do a. A month-long quilt display with, uh, heirloom quilts. So if anyone has an heirloom quilt they would like to display for the month, and then have an open, an open house, um, questioning time during National Library Week. So we have Hassan in February, we'll do the quilts in April. Um, so that's all we have so far, kind of besides our regular things. I haven't heard Sammy Joe's working with Democracy Project, and I haven't heard anything from Big Sandy, so I can't personally report. Out on that as far as a director position comes from, does anyone have any questions?
The quilt thing. Um, that'll be open for the public, right?
So in collaboration with the Quilt Guild, I'm hoping to borrow some quilt frames to be able to.
If Big Sandy had some quilts, if there was some cultures one for you.
Oh, yeah.
And then in regards to the walkthrough that happened in November, did we ever get the bids? Did you give it to them?
I did, not from that contractor, that communication. Didn't, was, didn't go very well, oh, so I did actually, I'm sorry, I separate my, the foundation and the trustee. We did, I did reach out to Tom Hayden about the flooring, so I do have some flooring bids for flooring in, in the. Yeah, no, it was, I don't know. The twenty-ninth is what, um, since this meeting got changed and with the continuing education was potentially gonna go long. Uh, not, not that the meeting, but anyway, it's just a longer timeframe anyway, I wasn't sure if the foundation people would want to stick around for an extra hour.
Twenty-ninth of this month?
The twenty-ninth of this month here at noon.
And then in regards to the catalog improvement plan, is that still going through, all of that going through the foundation as well? Cause we didn't, or we, were we building that off of those bids, that's I guess where I was asking.
I'm honestly, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So that will be.
Be something to discuss. Well, it might be something we need to discuss at a meeting.
Hey, I see you're closed for Martin Luther King Jr. Day and President's Day, right?
I can't think of anything.
Okay, um, we will go to unfinished business, the policy review, you probably will. Of the trustee meeting calendar, right?
So that's, yeah, it's on there, um, this is just a pro- proposed. Calendar, of course, meetings can be moved. But just to have something on, on a webpage and for people to be able to plan around.
I would like to suggest, or if we have discuss or voter, I would like to see two meetings in Big Sandy and two in Geraldine. So I had some dates and. Can you go through that now?
Yeah.
Okay, Big Sandy on June twenty. As we have homecoming. Is that the same weekend?
Well, it's, yeah, that, this would. On a Wednesday.
Okay, I would like to, to ask for, um, trustee meeting in Big Sandy that day. And then August twenty-seventh in Geraldine. And then, uh. Well, that's two more meetings, and then October twenty-second is Big Sandy and then Geraldine is April twenty. Well, that's two more meetings. And then October twenty-second is Big Sandy and then Geraldine is April twenty-third, so. To discuss that and do we vote on that or?
So when was the second Geraldine?
I put it October twenty-second because I tried to.
Okay, so, so Nancy, June twenty or. In Big Sandy and then April and August in Geraldine.
And, and if it doesn't, if, please tell me if that's out of, you want to move it to a different day or something, but I just think it's. Good to switch it around.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Do we need to vote on it?
I think it wouldn't hurt anything. With it, with the changes that you made.
Everyone happy with the changes? Would someone entertain a motion to add one, one more meeting in Big Sandy and one more meeting in Geraldine to the. Trustee calendar two twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five.
Um, I move to adapt to the um changes that were made. For two meetings in Geraldine, Big Sandy, for the Dusty Foundation Calendar and the proposed dates.
Second? Okay, it's been, oh. Do we have public? Public comment?
Could you repeat the dates, please, Captain?
Oh, I know, I'm quiet.
And they'll probably be posted, if that's helpful, on the community webpage.
April twenty-third is in Geraldine. So I put June twenty-fifth to be in Big Sandy. Um, Geraldine is August, I put August twenty-seventh. To have the meeting there and then October twenty-second is in Big Sandy.
Will they all be zoomed also?
Yes.
Oh, they'll be standard. Yeah, they'll be, yeah, she's gonna be, yeah, any other, um. Public comment? Okay, it's been moving second to, uh, all in favor to accept this calendar, say aye. Post? All right.
Um, so one thing I wanted to review or before we get into this conversation is. The library standards um state that the board needs to review policies. At least once every three years. So as I presented in September and October. Was that this layout, um, so I, yes, so that layout. Gives us a very visual representation of when they've been looked at. I want to emphasize that. It does not state anywhere that um it can, they can only be looked at one time every three years. The board can bring any of them at any time. I mean, they can be reviewed every year if, if the board would like, yeah. So um, I went with the. Meeting calendar, that's a yearly one, obviously, because it's for the calendar year. And then the mission statement was, is near the top of the list. And then the hotspot agreement, so kind of together those two. I also want to remind the board that.
Do we have, excuse me, do we have?
And we'll talk about, but I just wanted to say, um. Even if a policy hasn't been reviewed within the last three years, that doesn't mean that it's not. This, the standing policy that's on, I was able to find in the twenty-twenty minutes, it was requested. Um, when that was approved and it was November eighteenth of twenty-twenty.
Or the hotspot.
For the hotspot one, um. I looked at the, the meeting minutes, I think July through December of twenty-twenty. They're on the website. You can click through, um. I think it was the July one that Kim actually moved to, to approve a. A policy review calendar at that point, so um, this is kind of a continuation of. Of work. We can talk more about the hotspot agreement when we get there. Um, so yes, I wanted to assure everyone, even what, what. For action item today is the fact that the board has, is laying eyes on this. Mission statement. It does not mean that the policy committee cannot meet and review it, take input and, and bring it back again.
Okay, I studied about fourteen of them. Yesterday of different libraries. They pretty much say the same, same as what we had before. So I would like to look at that again. It's more, it was. It's more about the, um. What, what it does for the patrons that will end and it's just, it's wonderful. What it was before and how most of these are used by the library. It says, um, to foster a lifelong love. Of learning by providing free and equal access to information, resources and spaces. That empower individuals to explore, discover and engage with their community. And that's what most, except maybe a word change have been using, that's what he had used before. So I would like to look at it again.
And is what is currently approved by the board.
And we have a, I'm sorry, but who is owner, um, policy committee? Do we have, we have one, right?
Myself. And Kim wanted to be. That is your choices, gentlemen.
And then we just have to amongst ourselves, we um get together for me, correct?
So since there are three, that makes a quorum, it has to be advertised forty, forty-eight hours in advance and it's publicly. The public can attend.
So would you like? Kim or I to lead that committee?
Do I have to decide today?
It's your choice.
I want to think about it. Is that fine? Okay. We, we can only have two.
You can have three, we'll just have to be posted.
Okay, do we have anybody from the community on this?
With the trustees.
Okay, thank you. All right. Oh. Let's move.
Okay.
Okay.
Going back to the.
I will make a motion to send the mission statement back to the um policy committee.
Do I have a second? Now we have public comment, correct? Okay, any public comment on um changing the missions or reviewing the mission statement? Where do we find the mission states?
It's on the website.
Yeah, it kind of floats. My paperwork just floats around, so.
If you looked under trustee, and then it lists all of our policies on the Shoto County website, Shoto County Library website.
Just keep scrolling in.
It's like the first one.
It currently says, "The purpose of the Shoto County Library in Fort Benton, Montana. Along with its branch libraries in Geraldine, Big Sandy and Highwood. Is to serve the county's residents as an accessible center of reliable information. Without restrictions of censorship or violation of privacy. For every reader, the best book, for every question, the best answer, for every need, the best resource, for every encounter, the best experience. For every library dollar, the best value, for every person, a place to belong. And it was last approved by the Board of Trustees, August twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-two." Well, I know, we didn't have a policy committee at that point, I don't believe.
So what, what, what exactly did you want to change on it or?
Well, that's what we have to write it up and approve it when the trustee, because that the policies are. To the trustees.
And we have, we have a paper like this on both sides, so we have a lot of policy. So. So we'll just start going down the list, right?
That was my, um, my goal.
All right. Okay, how many, well, we can figure that out in the committee meeting, yeah. Okay, now we have to vote. Spin, second to, to uh send this back to the policy committee. All in favor, say aye. Post? Okay, that one is. Hotspot agreement.
So it was brought to my attention that it, this was not in the policy handbook that I had been working on. And that it was not on the webpage, so I, it should be the right after the.
You gave it to us today.
Yes, it was right after the page of the calendar, um.
Thank you.
So. I went back and looked, this, like I said, was adopted November nineteenth of twenty-twenty. Um, I was not here at that point. Maren said that it was put together as a combination of some fairly. Like Lewistown was one that they had looked at and comparative in size. Um, so that's where it came from. I, so as soon as I realized, I think part of why. It got left out of the packet was because it wasn't with any of the materials that I had found physically. And when I was searching through the computer records, I was only searching with things that said policy. So since this was under borrower agreement, it did not come up in my search results. So as soon as I. Found that that was lacking, I wanted to bring it to the board. This is just for a first reading for your information. It was not included before, so I wanted to make sure you had it. In your hands. I then had another question about the funding of this program. Um, the answer to that is. At this point, um, the state library, this is a shared resource via the state library. Um, that's where the hotspots themselves come from. I believe it's forty dollars a month per line. So we have. Five patron. Hotspots here that can be checked out. There are two patron hotspots in Big Sandy. We have a staff hotspot here that Carolyn takes when she goes to Front Range, so she can check out books at Front Range. Um, and at the Bluffs. Um, when Janelle Barber with Extensions and she's a county entity. Um, if there aren't any to check out, she will take our staff hotspot with her. Um, Geraldine does not have any hotspots because they do not work in Geraldine. So there's not, so there's not any up there. These are not meant to, to be just free, free wifi. So it's, that's part um in the, in the lending. The hotspot lending program, so that's the second page. Um, the borrowing guidelines checkout period is fourteen days. So two weeks. Um, books are twenty-eight days, DVDs are one week. Um, adult eighteen-plus cardholders may check out, so you have to have a library card to check it out. Um, one hotspot per cardholder or household at a time. Each hotspot can hook like thirteen different devices to it. So it's not like, if you take a hotspot home and they work, I mean, throughout like a house, so it's not limited. As far as that. Does that make sense? You don't need to have two hotspots in a house to be able to hook a laptop and a phone. A cardholder slash household must wait seven days upon returning a hotspot unit before checking one out again. We. In Fort Benton, we have not really had an issue with that. There are many libraries around the state where. People would just bring it back and want to check it right back out. And then, so it is a resource that's supposed to be able to be shared throughout a community. So if one person just is continuously checking it out. That's not, and then for that same reason, there's no renewals. Um, and then the borrower agreement, which is that first page of that packet, must be signed. And that talks about the replacement um B.
So what is your idea?
Oh, yes, ours are very popular. Um, you can see, that is one of the things under circulation statistics that I. Um, so like in October. Uh, like we had six checkouts. With a reminder, I mean, they are checked out for two weeks at a time, so. So we had six checkouts. Big Sandy usually has anywhere between zero, three is the most I've ever seen coming out of Big Sandy. I've been told that they don't necessarily get used as much because farther out of town, much like in Geraldine, they might not necessarily work. So, um, but yeah, we normally, we rarely have one. We don't, they're not sitting on the shelf for very, on, at the desk.
How much do they cost?
Um, it's my understanding, I don't know how much the actual device itself costs, but it's forty dollars a month per line. So the funding is set through, I believe, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. And I don't know, is it in the ask for the legislature this year? Do you know? Is it not part of the package? I don't. Anyway, that will be a conversation that we will need to have towards the end of the fiscal year. Well, as we do the budget, if it's something that we. Are going to be able to. It is very popular here. People are very appreciative, um, but it is, that is quite cost. Prohibitive. Um, per month, and so that will be a discussion that will need to be had. Um, we for sure. Want to keep one for, for at least staff use, because like I said, Carolyn takes it offsite and Janelle, Janelle uses it and, um. It's, is pretty important, so.
So is it your idea that you would like to still have five then?
Not necessarily. That's part of the conversation.
How many total is there?
Seven patron. For patron use. Um, but I wanted to bring this, like I said, as soon as I realized that it was not um out. So you can look at that. You can, I will try to answer any other questions once you've had a chance for later read through it. Uh, next on the list, this is an email that I got from Darlene on Monday afternoon, so you can. Read through that.
Yes, they're up there now. No, they're not coming till.
Friday.
Yeah, so she's hauling books away and cleaning things and, and her dad's coming to help. Uh, move some heavy stuff and they're storing it and they're getting ready and.
Um, so Darlene has requested since Brandon's will come. On Friday to start ripping out the carpet, that the Big Sandy branch be closed from. Thursday, January sixteenth, so they can start moving books and bookshelves and then be closed through the twenty-ninth to get things ready. To be back open.
And there may be, you know, the, the guy might get done sooner or, or not, or. And then putting everything back, but she still thinks she's kind of open, kind of like for the. Well, like, I don't really know.
I, and she hasn't talked to me. This was all the communication I've received about it, so I just read it as closed the sixteenth through the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, okay. Or is there any questions about that?
Um, they'll still be working during that time, obviously, because they'll be moving stuff around.
Yep, yep, and as soon as one room is done, I think they, well, it'd be dusty. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, they plan to be there.
In email, she said, she said that she and Sarah planned to do some planning.
I never received an email like that, so I'm not sure.
You sent one to the board.
I sent one to the board?
No, I think she's saying.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was not attached to that. CC'd on that email, so.
All right. And then, and then I have another thing. And then, and then I have another thing.
Well, do you want to vote on?
Or on this one?
Or?
Yeah. Well, there's a little, there has to be some repairs on a.
Well, I think we should vote on the closures separately and then.
Okay. Um, any public comment? No, make a motion first. No, right. Could I have a motion for the Big Sandy Library to be closed January seventeenth through the twenty nine?
The sixteenth.
Sixteenth? From sixteenth to twenty ninth and four, uh renovations of the carpet.
I don't know, look at that. So that's two days, one week and five days and the other. So.
It's. Well, there, the library is closed on the twentieth, so.
And the twenty.
And the twenty ninth is the next, through the next Wednesday. So it's two, four, and then three.
So. I will make the motion that the Big Sandy can be closed from Thursday the sixteenth through the twenty ninth. And order to put the carpet down.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Now, public comment. Is there any public comment on the revisions of the carpet in Big Sandy?
That just seems like a long time.
Yes, isn't it?
This is, I, I walked through it with her. There's a, the whole thing is carpet. So, um, there's the front room, uh, the bookshelves, main room, the kid room, the Montana room, and the meeting room in the back. So there's a, there's a lot of space. Yeah.
I have some bad history.
What kind of help do they have to do this moving of all the books and shelves and et cetera?
Um, Darlene's handling it. She's got her father helping and.
So are you saying there's two people?
No, there's more. No, like, I think I may go in there. I have to go to town tomorrow, so I'm going to stop and help her load some books. And we're donating books, boxes.
I think she's using the her.
Her father?
No. Bill Unset Long to their uh reading club. They had a reading club and also.
Probably the friends. There's probably, yeah. She just, she said, you coming in tomorrow? I said, yeah, I have to come in. So I'll, I'll stop and load up some boxes. And I'm not sure where she's putting everything. She moved, she very careful with the Montana room. Have the books loaded and she took the Mountaineers. I can't remember what she told me, but to a very safe place. So she's trying to do it all right. Oh, and this is the.
So one of the things, when they put the carpet in, the whole intention in Big Sandy was to have squares. The squares then, something happens, because they do, they have the children's room, they have community room. But when we got down to it, it was costing so because it took five years to get all together that they bagged the carpet squares and they put the whole flooring in the same kind of carpet. So in wherever you have a seam, and you can see it right here, it rips out. So all the seams from the different rooms have separated, yeah. And I even brought it to the tension at Keith Valentine, other than when we walked through it before anything was in it. So, um, it's just, but because they're squares, they can do each room on their own. So that means they could do, I think they're going to start in the Montana room, then they would do that. They can move those things back into the Montana room. And they have a children's room. They have the front air, the front area, and then the whole other front area.
And then the back. So she's, she's moved a lot of the stuff out of the back room. And like I said, her father's coming down to help her load up tables and chairs and furniture. Yes, yes.
Uh, you may want to check with the commissioners on volunteers. They just had a big meeting with lawyers on volunteers and workman's comp. So before you have volunteers working, you may want to verify that it's okay.
All right.
I think you had at that meeting.
Um. So a comment in the chat says from Big Sandy, we will have one day to move things. And one day.
Monday, I think, isn't he?
All right. We will have one day to move things and one day to move it back after they lay the carpet. We have enough volunteers with our friends group, but thank you.
Okay. We'll get a whole.
We do have a volunteer policy too. We do.
Yeah, it's just the times people want to speak.
What did, what did you say?
I said, it's just the times people, you know, commissioners and the we've moved as far as the vast, you're thinking for volunteers and stuff. Liability, so people are really looking at those kind of things.
Okay, so in our policy, it currently states insurance, the heading is insurance, workers' compensation, usage of county property and incidental expenses. No insurance or workers' compensation is paid for volunteers. Um, volunteers must observe safety rules and minimize waste of natural resources when using library equipment, and volunteers may not incur expenses for said activity.
But they just.
So there's not. It's my understanding that Workman's Comp does not cover volunteers, so if somebody.
Yeah. Different than the counties, right? I mean, I know we fall under the county, but.
Okay. I, I will.
We still.
Or something, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yep. Is there any other, um? Um, yes.
A suggestion on the good side is take really close attention to how many hours you get volunteers. Or so that you can use that as well, I don't know the word I'm looking for.
Like a benchmark?
But, well, no, when you ask for more grants and things like that.
In kind.
How many hours? Uh, at fifteen dollars an hour.
Yep.
You've had this much donated to your museum and you can use that as a fifty fifty.
That's also a question on the library's survey, is how many volunteer hours per year?
We also have it in, we also have it in the policy.
Keeping track.
Keeping track. Yes, we do.
Yep.
It's in the policy.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we ready to vote? Um. If we do the motion.
Yep. It's all done.
I'm sorry. Um, since we have a, um, a motion, and it's been um, seconded, first, second, whatever. All in favor of allowing the library in Big Sandy to be closed sixteenth through the twenty ninetieth, say aye please.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. All right. I knew, I do have another thing from Darling. Um. There's, there's three outlets in the floor. And, um, two of them are under computer desks. And one is just kind of when you come in, it's right there. And it's been damaged because it's people, it's in the roadway or whatever. So she's contacted oh Shine Electric. And they will come down and fix it when that piece of carpet is out and they figure it's about three hundred dollars.
So that would fall, I think, under, um, since it's not a huge amount, just under daily operations, she can just get that invoice sent to me and there's there's monies in the budget under repairs and maintenance is where that would come out of.
Um, but I have a motion.
Uh, I, I know, since it wasn't advertised on there and since it's just under.
It's three hundred dollars.
It's, yeah.
Okay. Right. So.
I have the consensus in there. So according to the Roberts Rules Order, you can approve meetings and consensus. Which means that if no one objects to the meetings after we've been collecting made, they are considered approved without a formal vote. So, um. So the concession action for the ministers is always required. During the previous director, both my, myself and Ron Young had one of the past binder meetings came down and he did it, holds, hold unit three hours on taking minutes. It was about the same time that we had Sandra. And Sandra needed a little help keeping track of what we said in the minutes. So I volunteered. And, um, and at that time, we were told that we learned about the consensus vote. So being that you can see that all the voting is taking time to do it and it isn't necessary. On the financials, they said, the only time that you have to have have the vote uh formal vote is if you only do your budget financials once a year. Then that's given. Otherwise, in Roberts Rules and everything I've read, a consensus work would work for on minutes and on financials. And besides that, Emily takes excellent minutes, so I didn't really have to even continue doing the minutes.
Any discussion? Those themselves?
What's the benefit of a consensus?
The benefit in the consensus is the public isn't going to change our minutes. There are minutes. Okay. So there, we approve them. And the same with the financials. And the financials are our responsibility to, to the commissioners. That's what we work under. So it just, I know we had a meeting and it was, we had a meeting, a short meeting. And it was only nine minutes long and we had four public commitments on it. So it just speeds up our time.
And especially since we can get the paperwork from Emily and, and, and have it and read it, then we should be able to.
And we make those corrections to her before that she prints them out. So that really helps because we also see them before she even does that.
I think, um, would be my understanding, just moving forward, that's how it would be posted on the agenda, right? Is that just that it is under the consent agenda? I don't. Yeah.
If you need page numbers or anything, it's all.
Any other discussion on our side? Nancy? Okay, um. Motion to public, in motion? I need a motion, please, to change our uh the minutes and the financials monthly to consensus agenda, consensus, whatever. Yeah. All right.
We scale vote.
Okay. Yeah, we still vote for them, but it will just, we won't be discussing the long time.
We won't have that public opinion.
Will we vote or will we just say?
Yeah, we'll say, yeah, just like we do on, yeah.
Or do we just say?
And they don't want to vote anymore.
Good? Hey, I would like to make, I would, could I please have a motion to turn the monthly minutes and the monthly budget to a consensus vote? May I have that motion? Is that right? Nancy's thinking.
I know. I believe that we.
I'm not, so my question, so it wasn't an action item on the agenda, so I'm not sure that, that, I don't think it can, but, and I, I honestly don't think it has to be voted on, just the way that our next agenda is structured for the next meeting with that.
And it shows that the voting by the show of hands is for any meetings that are under twelve.
I think if we don't have any corrections or changes. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
I don't think we have to.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe just help speed it up. And this, and I like it because if we get the stuff ahead and we read it, and if we have some community comments, Emily and or whoever, then just speed it up a little bit. Okay. Public comment?
Nope, that is not.
Okay, so that's done. Alrighty. Um, is there any new business? Or we would have had to put that in.
No, it's, it's fine, because Finn had brought it up before. Um. Nona asked or brought up spoke with me about evaluations. Would you like to talk about that? Because there can be no voting that happens, but discussion can happen.
Um, as we've done every year in January, February, you will be evaluated. And then, and then I also was reading, I've actually done some research that, um, you get to make your own evaluation, right? And present it to us at that time. Is that correct?
Well, we've done it a couple of different
Yeah.
ways.
Yeah.
So there's been like self-evaluation with board members do an evaluation. And then I've met with a committee. One year I met with Nancy and Janet, that was in twenty twenty two. And then, um, yeah, one year we did it as a whole. One year was with Tracy.
And it's how the director chooses. I mean, how the chairman chooses to.
Yeah. And I would like to have um, next, next meeting, have your evaluation. And please, Emily, write an evaluation of yourself for us to, to read. And then we'll, um.
And you want all of us to do our evaluation.
Yes, yes, please. And then if we need to go in special session, we can.
So that will, that needs to be um, noticed on the agenda, right, for, um.
And where would it be?
For closed session.
Yes, yes.
February. For February.
Yes, yeah.
And that's what this.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're using the one from the Shoto County. Shoto County employees, yes.
The one, the trustee book.
I was gonna say, because Shoto, like the, the Shoto County does not have a, any evaluation. From the trustee manual?
No, no, this is from.
Yeah, it's from the trustee.
No. Is it?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yes.
No, this is, this is Shoto County.
That is not in the personnel manual.
No, it isn't. This, this is.
No, I mean, the Shoto County Personnel Manual, that is not found in the Shoto County Personnel Manual.
From Steve. Steve.
I did not. I think Nona handed it out, maybe. I did not hand it out.
Oh, you should, yeah, there's, there's, you have it. Yeah. No, this is from Steve Gannon. And it's, and it's under the Shoto County, uh, recall. What are we? Um, this is for his, for all the stuff in Shoto County. It's, it's Shoto County, uh, Book of Rules and Regulations and, and helpful stuff for all their, for all their. Sorry, my brain is tired. Um, for all their, for sorry, um, my brain, for employees. Thank you, thank you, Nancy. It's, it's, yeah.
Does Nancy have some? Because you made some for everyone.
Nona handed this out before the meeting.
I just.
This is yours, right? I can get you one. Yes, no, 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 it's not. This is because I have, I've looked through the one in our handbook. And, and I guess actually we could use both, but I thought this one was good.
I think we do something different almost every year, so that is fine.
Yeah. So, but I think it's important to, I was reading it, and then you, you need to evaluate yourself and give that to us. Right? We do that last year, yeah. Okay. And then do this in February.
When would you like my response by?
Pretty for all of us to look over it before the meeting.
Yes, yes.
But how, what, what are your time?
One week, two weeks. The twenty sixth.
How much time do you want?
Two weeks.
Two weeks before?
Be good, be two weeks. When do you send out this stuff? You don't send.
I tried to, well, one week is, is my goal to have all of them.
Weeks, then, then I'll be fine.
So by February twelfth. Right? Is that how the board would prefer that they come?
What do you think, girls? Yeah, what's easiest? You know, we all don't get down here. So, yeah. Yeah, what's easiest, you know, we all don't get down here, so, yeah. So we, we don't need to vote on that, right?
No.
Okay, all right. So is there any public comment items, not on the agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board?
Yes, I am, I'm Annie Gonzalez, I'm the current president of the GFWC Fort Vettan Women's Club. We hold our board meeting and our general meeting here every month, the first Thursday and then the second Thursday. The second Thursday is the, the focus of what I'm trying to get at here. Um, during our meeting, we always have lunch and of course, then drinks and maybe punch or whatever, um. Big, um. I'm wondering if there could be a change to this bathroom and have a tub sink, like I always call it a shop sink, in this bathroom, maybe. Re, reduce that a bit, a deep sink so that, A, you get water, you can do dishes, we could not have to haul water in here, um, our membership is, uh, we've got a number that are aged women who are close to seeing, um, you know, hauling things down a few flights, a few stairs, or, you know, coming across icy sidewalks, et cetera, um, I'm just wondering if that could be something that could be done on an improvement.
And you need every, every?
Every month, um, uh, September through May.
I addressed that.
Yes.
So, Annie, I so appreciate you bringing those concerns before us. We did have a walkthrough in November.
Mm-hmm.
It's November, in regards to that, um, and that's what we were talking about with our capital plan, so that is on the plan. It will make a plan and that will be.
Wonderful, but you'd like that soon.
We haven't heard, and Emily addressed that, that we haven't heard back from that contractor yet, so. Um.
So.
But it's good to have it highlighted.
Give you a little bit of, you know.
Oh.
Yeah.
So there's no water, there's no water in there?
Yeah.
We have talked about this. The ladies that were being opposed for our last event have planned a tea party, and so, um, with the roads and et cetera, they actually said, maybe we need to explore holding our meetings somewhere else that isn't, doesn't have stairs, and I said, well, we've got an elevator, but it's, you know, just, it's the whole thing about carrying something in, and like, I, I get it, so, so just to give you a little more. That, okay, so, thank you, thank you.
Have you, have you ever thought, um?
Oh, let's see, the five, and you'd have to get a minion with a cart or something, because the older, I can't carry the five gallons. If I get them with water and then.
I did, I, I, but you can't get, uh,
You can.
Like a business, yeah, well, you can't get a pitcher, well, you can, but you have, then you're doing.
You lose half of it when you.
No, there's a, okay, so there's a water, um, stand under here, and you can do cold or hot, um, a hot doesn't work on it, so I brought my electric kettle. Um, and I brought two air pots of water that I boiled at home so that we didn't have to deal with this kitchen or that sink or that, but I did bring a new jug of water, because it was at that point. Um, but to then transport pitchers of water, because there's, you only have, it's for filling water bottles, not for filling coffee pot or a tea pot or et cetera, so, just, it's just not as convenient as it could be.
It needs to be the size of the worship ball.
Yeah, well, and then we clean up from our lunch, and so we're always like, well, where do we take this? Well, I can take it home, then, yeah.
And we've had so many issues, so it was, it was a necessary thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, what do we do? Do we, we just? Put that on the list?
Yeah.
Okay, put it on the top of the list.
Yeah.
Like you did the boiler.
So, any, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Um, yes, ma'am.
I'm Sissy Felton, and, uh, I'm part of the DES disaster in LEPC meetings, and.
Could say, please, say it again, just when we.
Uh, DES, the disaster uh, emergency plans here for Choto County, and I'm part of LEPC. And who can we talk to for like the MOU with the library?
Oh, you, you. Sure.
Initials here.
Oh, MOU is just an agreement that the city, that if there's a disaster or something, because uh, the county just found out that you have hotspots. So if our internet goes down, and the hospital or stuff like that, or if we need to relocate patients or people in the community, and we've been going to a lot of that, and the libraries aren't included.
Oh, so you want us on a, you would like this building on a spot in an emergency?
It, it, it would be, it would be, you know, if you have power or something for like charging people who charge their, you know, keys.
So I was DES.
Correct.
Definitely for Choto County.
Right.
Yes, and each, each place, no matter what it is, from the church
Exactly.
to, you know, like, I can say that, that on, in our talk, the Catholic Church and walls.
Right, you're, you're.
So those all, and then it gets put into work.
And we're, are, uh, we're in the process of hiring a new DES right now, because Debbie retired. Uh, so when we're going through all of this, we knew about hotspots and stuff like that, but nowhere can we find that we have any agreement with the library. So we just, uh, when we can, we'd like to get on your agenda sometime, not anytime soon, because we're still hiring new DES and stuff, and just, you know, it, it's, it's a simple thing, if we need to go, can we do this? Okay? Okay?
Do you want to be on the agenda in, well, this building, so you wouldn't have, would there be heat? There wouldn't be. The, you just want.
Yeah, it's just, there, there's a whole list, if you'd like me to help you with it. Oh, I was DES director, and I helped write the manuals.
Right, and then sometimes it's just community members, they're someplace.
No.
So, so for example, um, the bank, this is the emergency, they run a drill one time a year. If there were to be something that would happen at the bank, they gather here.
Yeah, and, and so the.
Uh, I think it's separate from the scene.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure everybody's involved and see, you know, help out.
When the asset's disaster.
It's the local emergency preparedness.
So you want, you want, you would like to be on the agenda next month?
Uh, we gotta get a new DES.
Just in the future, yeah.
In the future.
Yeah.
Okay. Future, get everything, but.
One, that's a good idea.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Or anything today? Or? Well, okay, well then, our next meeting will be February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, here at noon, and I call this meeting adjourned at one twenty.
One twenty-three.
One twenty-three, okay. Thank you all for coming.
It's a good job.
Yeah. Couldn't get in there.
Yes.
Yeah, it goes so much minutes, you know, or motion.
I told you, my role was.